One, call this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission to order. The record show that our Chair, Doug Nugent, is unavailable tonight, so I am the acting Chair. The first order of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Carol Tagayan.
Hi, good evening Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As you know, Ken and I, this is a new table, it's nice. Ken and I started attending the meetings here and watching the progress of your code since about last November. And we've mentioned a number of times the importance of wireless access to the community and the residents. And that our participation here is because we want to do what we can to ensure that your residents, businesses, and visitors have access to the benefits and conveniences that wireless services provide. Through our comments, we've expressed our appreciation for the opportunity to speak, and we believe you, the Commissioners, and your staff deserve our thanks for listening to our comments, for taking our input, for meeting us with us, and for reviewing our letters. It has been expressed on several occasions that maybe we're not being completely straightforward in our comments and some other comments, and I wanted to address some of these sentiments and let you know that our employees live, work, and recreate and retire in this community and the many surrounding communities in Washington. We have over 4,500 employees here between our offices, our stores, and our brands include AT&amp;T Cricket and now DirecTV. And we contribute to the communities we serve philanthropically through employee volunteer hours and also by providing vital communications to your residents. We care to ensure that our communities and our customers have access to the services that they rely on. With over 20,000 residents here and over 7,000 housing units, maybe you have one to one and a half devices per person. That could be around 20,000 to 30,000 devices. That's probably conservative. Active in your city at any time. That doesn't include people who commute to Kenmore to work or people who commute through Kenmore. Our wireless network needs to reach each of those devices when they're moving on the roads, when they're working in the front yard, when they're sitting at their desk, when they're in retail stores or enjoying your parks. Some residents rely on their mobile devices solely to access the Internet for calling 911, for staying in touch with customers, contacts, friends, and family. As you know, cellular wireless is a network built on spectrum bands. The communication travels from your device to the cell tower, and at that point it travels across fiber or wireline to get where you're going, whether it be a text, a call, or an Internet inquiry. There are a number of different spectrum ranges that AT&amp;T utilizes, and we do need to implement all of those options to provide the best, most advantageous coverage to Kenmore. The comments we've submitted have addressed the way we are designing and building our network today. Yes, there are other advances that are happening that will be made, and new ways to design and reinforce the network. And, you know, we've been mentioning about the height. And we just want you to know that we need a certain height to really make the network as it's designed today continue to work. The limited heights that are being proposed just aren't going to allow us to reach into those nooks and crannies of the city where we need both in-building and out-of-building coverage. So that's why we're hoping that we can look at ways to allow for alternative processes to give us the height when it's needed. We're not discounting the new network building technologies that are being used elsewhere, being tested, being implemented, or being re-engineered, and in some cases are being, you know, researched. But we are focused on the network as it has been built and as it needs to evolve to ensure Kenmore has a path that will allow our growing and changing network to meet the demand. And with that, I thank you for your time, and Ken and I are here to answer questions.
Lynda Atkins.
Hello, good evening. I'm Lynda Atkins, and I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. I also want to thank all of you and the staff and the City Attorney for really listening to the comments from both T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. We really appreciate your attention to the process and your consideration of our comments. I want to focus on just two or three discrete items in the draft code. And before I do that, I would also just like to echo what Carol just said about, you know, the importance of wireless coverage to the citizens of Kenmore, and that, you know, the comments that we're making about coverage and what's needed to achieve coverage really do reflect the reality of how the network operates and what is needed to provide coverage. So the first thing I wanted to talk about, and this is echoing a little bit what Carol just said, looking at 1860-050, which is your review process and maximum allowable heights table. This is a table that AT&amp;T has commented on extensively, and so has T-Mobile. And I guess I would just say this evening that there, you know, the staff has not made really any changes in the heights. And as we've commented before, it's likely that most of the facilities that T-Mobile would need to build are going to be taller than those heights. And we do appreciate the fact that the Commission and the staff has worked hard to prepare an adjustment process. And I guess I would just say that I think, from the perspective of T-Mobile, the thing that probably will make this code workable ultimately is the fact that the adjustment process exists. I think without the adjustment process, given the low heights in the table, that it would be very difficult to provide coverage here. The next comment I have is just a very quick, specific drafting comment in 1860-080, which is the criteria for determining infeasibility of alternative sites. There's criteria A through G, and I thought criteria C, I think is maybe, could benefit from a little bit additional drafting work. I was going to suggest that that read, "The alternative fails to meet engineering requirements for site characteristics such as location, size, ground space, setbacks, or similar characteristics." I think that would make this a little bit more clear and easier to administer. And then my last specific comment relates to 186200, which is the section on major In subsection B1, where it's talking about the significant gap at service, 1A, T-Mobile has commented on this section before, and I still have a little bit of concern with that section on behalf of T-Mobile. And I wanted to suggest what I think might be a simple way to help resolve the concern that we have, which is really that this criteria be something that isn't just saying you only have a significant gap if you can't make a call at all, or you can't connect to the Internet at all. So my drafting suggestion here would be that a significant gap exists such that users are regularly unable to reliably connect to the service network or are regularly unable to maintain a reliable connection. And those are all the comments I have. And again, I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile if you have any questions.
Ken Lyons.
Thank you Acting Chair and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I also echo the sentiments from Carol and Lynda. We do appreciate all the time you have put into this. We appreciate the willingness to listen to our concerns. We appreciate staff and the City Attorney reviewing some of the concerns we have and making some improvements, notable improvements, I'd say, to the draft that's there. We also do appreciate in the latest draft the possibility of seeing pole replacements in non-view zones as a part of a minor adjustment. That's also something that's been very helpful, as well as a minor adjustment process where in the last time it didn't actually exist. As Carol noted, we do remain concerned about the broader issues we discussed, including realistic height limits. And, you know, as you've seen the chart from the last meeting, just about the height of existing facilities in the community generally are much taller than what's envisioned under the new code. And again, the entire reason why we raise those concerns is that we are concerned about being able to provide quality, reliable wireless service to the community here. Just a couple of comments, just specific comments. The first I'd like to just focus on is the minor adjustment process. We did send over a red line that made some suggested changes. The first one is that we suggest that the minor adjustment allow for up to 10 additional feet instead of the five feet proposed. We have noted about how five feet may not be meaningful considering some of the constraints we have, particularly on utility poles, we've discussed as well. And also, it's important to note that this minor adjustment provision is only available in non-view zones. So that's the place where perhaps an additional flexibility would be warranted. And then we think that 10 feet would actually provide perhaps a little bit more meaningful relief and perhaps reduce the number of requests that would have to go through the major adjustment process. We've also suggested some alternative language for clarifying like-for-like pole replacements in non-view zones. Again, that's in the minor adjustment provision, and I'd refer to the red line that was provided to you. And then also, we suggested adding a criteria that actually came from the city of Kirkland that looks at whether or not the adjustment will result in a substantial change in the impacts to the surrounding community. We think that might be a nice common sense way to look at whether or not the adjustment could be supported. I think I heard Lynda Atkins from T-Mobile mention a few things that we would pretty much agree with, or we were trying to get at it in perhaps a different way in terms of language we had suggested. But in the table and the footnotes, of course, aside from the concerns about height, we do suggest that utility poles specifically, that the height caps of 50 and 55 feet be removed. We did have a conversation since our last meeting with Pudas Energy to find out exactly how tall are the poles in Kenmore. And they told us that the poles range from 34 feet to 38 and 1/2 feet. So with a height limit of 50 feet, that means that you essentially only have 12 and 1/2 to 16 feet actually available for co-locating wireless facilities on them. Because even though you allow 20 feet, there's a height cap of 50 feet that basically, particularly in residential zones where that would be a challenge. So again, that is something we would ask the Commission to perhaps reconsider, just because the math was based on a presumption of a certain pole height that may in fact be a little bit taller, and especially there's some variability there. And it's certainly beyond the variability that would be addressed through a minor adjustment provision. So we wanted to address that. And then, we made a couple of small requests as it relates to calling out flush mounting as an acceptable method for attaching antennas to a utility pole. That's commonly what you would see. The language is a little bit unclear, so we've made a couple of suggested changes there. And then I think we were trying to address the same concern I think that T-Mobile had about the alternative criteria, the ways that you would look at a site to determine whether or not it was feasible as an alternative. And I think that what they suggested would work. We've also have, we've also suggested another path, I think, that would accomplish the same thing, whether or not there are individual site characteristics that would make that particular site unsuitable as an alternative that are for perfectly legitimate reasons. So I think T-Mobile's suggestion is valid. I think certainly ours is trying to address the same thing. With that, I thank you again very much for your time on this. Thank you again very much to staff. I know we haven't always agreed on all of the things, but I really do appreciate the work that has gone into it and your willingness to listen to us, and happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and prove the minutes, and then we'll get into the agenda item and see if we have any comments for our representatives here. So do I hear a motion for the minutes?
I approve that we move the minutes.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes pass. Okay, we're on to the next item, which is the communication facilities. Welcome our City staff up to the table. Thank you.
So we're fortunate to have Dawn Raytown with us this evening. So any legal questions, it would be a great time to think about those this evening. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the Planning Commission has spent many months giving serious consideration to these proposed amendments, and we are pretty close to having a draft which would be ready for public hearing. So I am confident that this evening you will be able to get through the proposed amendments so that we can then schedule the public hearing for June 7th. Yes, for June 7th. So that would be the goal for this evening. You've had a lot of discussion around height and around other issues where you've tried to balance the many different competing issues. I would suggest that this evening, as Lori has said in her memo, that you go through these proposed amendments by exception rather than through every single one, but that's up to you if you prefer the other way, but I think it may be more efficient by exception. And then also, our staff is prepared then to address the specific comments that you've heard this evening, and we can hopefully wrap this discussion up. Okay? Turn it over to Lori. Thank you.
Good evening. So I think I probably should start by asking if, in fact, you are, if going through these amendments by exception is the preferred approach, knowing that we would still be holding some of them to discuss as part of the public comment we heard.
The will of the Commission, is that fine?
Can you explain a little bit more what you mean by exception?
So by going through it as, by exception, it means that you would call out issues that you had or questions that you had about the amendments rather than have us go through page by page. So really, you direct the discussion by telling us which things you want to talk about.
You okay with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure, okay, let's do that.
So it's up to you.
Okay. So why don't we just open it up to anybody who has comments on, and make sure you cite your, you know, page, because we have 113 pages to.
I have just, I have a couple little clarifying questions. I'm guessing, I know the answer, but I just wanted to make sure. So on 18.6130, well, you know, there were two different kinds of page numbers, so it was either page 13 in the middle or page 15 on the lower right.
Right.
So it's those. So towers in the right of way are exempted here. Is that because they're exempted under the ECFM, or why are they exempted?
So towers actually are not exempted. They're handled in two different ways, and the ECFM standards that are in here parallel the federal requirements. So staff didn't tinker around with those.
That's what I mean. So that's from the, okay.
Right.
Okay. So one other little question, and I don't have a page number on it. 18.60140A.
That's on page 15, 15 and 17.
Could be. I think it talks about not increasing the height, but I think we want to say that the dimensions are not increased, right? Just to, more broadly. Is that making sense with that section? I'd have to look back at the.
Right, it's 1860140B, and the current rule is that modifications that propose to increase the height of the conforming facility shall be processed as a new application consistent with the processes outlined, et cetera, unless a minor adjustment is granted. So that would be a question for, again, this is a conforming facility, so if you had a conforming facility that you also wanted to require that if they were expanding the dimensions, that you also wanted to see that as a new application, that could be an approach you could take. It's not quite as amenable to colocation as the height.
So if they change out a small, narrow pole for a big, humongous, fat pole.
Well, it would be no taller, but it could be fatter. And if that's of concern, yeah, we should definitely add the thing about dimension.
Well, I guess it just doesn't seem like we should assume, you know, just without any review, approve that. I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's just, that would be my suggestion, is that changes need some review, but.
Are you proposing a language, or?
Well, the language would be changed to change in dimension, not just change in height. So that would be my recommendation, but we don't have to do that.
So the new language would read modifications that propose to increase the height or dimensions of the conforming facility.
Well, height is a dimension.
Or other dimensions.
The dimensions.
We'll come up with something.
It is one dimension, so. But that's up to the Planning Commission, so.
So can I ask you a question? So is your concern, Deborah, about the diameter of the bundle of whatever those pieces are that get added around the circumference of the pole?
Right, so let me just.
So it's not just about the dimension of the pole, is it about the overall dimensions of what they place on the pole?
Well, it's the dimensions of the communications facility. So, and now I'm having trouble, like, pulling up the document at all, so.
Oh dear.
I mean, that's why I'm just kind of struggling here, because I can't seem to pull it up. Yeah, but I don't even have the.
Do you have a paper copy?
No. Okay.
So we're, oh, so this is about ECFM, though?
No, these are modifications that do not meet the ECFM criteria. So you recall that the ECFM criteria, there are a lot of opportunities to modify the pole, its height, its width, in terms of the antennas and that kind of thing. This is if we have modifications that do not fall under the ECFM rule.
Okay, right, okay.
So it's still a conforming facility?
Correct.
But on letter B, if the modifications change the height, this provision specifies that a whole new application needs to be made?
Correct. And I think Deborah's concern is what if the conforming facility, antennas really are addressed under A, antenna modifications and replacements, but maybe if we were talking about new antennas or a wider pole, for example, if that kind of thing were proposed, I think that is where her concern is.
Yeah, I just don't know why we're calling out height as opposed to other dimensions that would change, so, but if there's more.
Any other thoughts on that one?
Yeah, well, I mean, we haven't heard any public comment or industry comment that width, for example, is advantageous to the industry. It's really just been a height conversation as far as extending service, so I'm trying to imagine a scenario where a dimension other than height is particularly relevant.
Well, they change out, they change out things from small poles to big poles with some regularity, so it does come up. I apparently don't have the document. I had it yesterday, so, anyway, I'll share. So it's hard to relate to. I just don't know why we would limit it to that. Is there a reason that we will, that you guys felt the need to limit it to height and not dimensions?
Again, I think it was probably in the sense that we want to support colocation, and if it had to be a little bit wider and they were going to put additional antennas on it as a conforming facility, that that maybe was a better solution than, whereas if they were increasing the height, that seemed clear to be something that the community would be concerned about.
Well, as long as it remains conforming with all of the, you know, restrictions that that means. I mean, is that what that language implies, that it has to remain conforming, or?
Height.
It just wasn't clear to me.
Right, if a facility is conforming, it meets all the rules.
Yeah, but then they're going to modify it. They're going to modify it.
Correct.
Yeah.
So our issue with modification was height. And if the Planning Commission doesn't like it, we can easily change it.
I guess what I'm saying is that how, does this language say, because I don't see it, that after the modifications, the modifications still make it conforming?
Well, it would have to.
Really? Okay.
Something new that's not conforming, right?
Okay.
I mean, we wouldn't allow someone to do an illegal modification.
Well, you can. Well, you can, if it's prohibited, but you'd have to go through an adjustment process.
Okay. So the language just hung me up because it just didn't appear that there was anything restricting them from making it a non-conforming in other dimensions.
No.
Because height was called out, so.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was definitely not.
If that's obvious to everybody else, cool. Okay, my last comment is picky, and that is on 18.21, excuse me, 18.22, 23, 24, 25. All of those have a clause that says, gosh, this part is actually addressed in 18.6 now. But 18.21 is not called out in that way, and I don't know if that was on purpose.
Is it 18.60?
Yeah, yeah.
Point one, sorry, which?
Well, and again, I don't have the document. So the, yeah, it would be, I assume it'd be 18.60. No, actually, it was in your, no, I was correct the first time. So in the.
The charts?
No. It's in your highlighted, there was a whole, like, you know, 80-page highlighted text that you sent, right? The document that we got was 113 pages, right? Is that the document I was supposed to review?
All the attachments, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So in that, there is modified other parts of the code.
Correct.
And those modified sections, 18.21 through 25.
Okay.
18.21 does not call out that it is actually, the material that is in there is really in 18.60 now. So that should have that edit. All the other subsections in 18.2 do have that. Look at 18.22, 18.23, 18, they all start out with the same sentence, which is something on the order that I don't have in front of me, of this topic is actually now addressed in 18.60.
So at the end of every chart, there should be a paragraph, whatever the appropriate site is, that says use allowances and development regulations for wireless communication facilities are located in Chapter 1860 KMC. And I think what you're telling me is that in one of these.
Right, exactly.
It is not there.
It isn't there, right.
Is that right?
Oh, I saw it, yeah.
Okay.
The very first one. It looked like it was at the beginning of each. It looked like it was at the beginning of each section, not the end, but, so anyway.
We'll find it.
Yeah, cool, that's all.
Okay.
Dennis, go ahead.
My question may be different from an exception, but I did have a definitional question on the exemptions. Where do you exclude, like, home Wi-Fi systems?
You mean like satellite dishes and...
No, you have a home system for your computers.
Like a router?
Yeah.
Not, it's not addressed specifically?
Does it need to be? Does it need to be exempted?
Is the WCF definition exclude those?
We can look at that. I think in the exclusions... While we fumble around and try to find the relevant pages, it's in attachment 1B are the definitions. And we're looking at the definition of wireless communication facility generally means an unmanned facility for the transmission and/or reception of radio frequency signals typically consisting of one or more antennas, a transmission or alternative transmission support structure, cables, and other transmission equipment, and an equipment enclosure or cabinets. So probably from reading that, it's possible that you could consider that to include, I suppose, your modem and your router is what you're concerned about?
That was part of it. And when I looked at the 18.60.030 exemptions, it wasn't clear, because C is for military and civilian, and that it typically means between military and and the civilian, though, doesn't differentiate between commercial and home. So I'm assuming it's not covered there or exempted there.
Right.
And then D talks about handheld units, but the router is not a handheld unit.
Right, I think F is the one that we would have to look at. And we will have to look and go look at 47 Code of Federal Regulations. I know for sure that's where the TV receive-only television antennas are, but whether those other facilities are included, I don't know. And so, pardon?
If not, we can make sure.
Yeah, so we'll look at that.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because I don't have some issues.
And so if we need to add that to the exemptions, I assume that you all are fine with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Then I had a couple other little comments. On that same page, subsection H, is where you have only if the dimensions of the facility are not changed. Is there any reason that should be not materially changed?
Well, we were trying to avoid setting up a case where something became exempt, even if it was a change, okay? So that's where you would go either, you would go to that section we were just talking about with Deborah, modification to a non-conforming structure. And so there are certain things that would be allowable, antenna modification and antenna replacements, but we did not want to put that as a blanket exemption, which would require no review and no need for the city even to look at it, and who would define materially?
Well, you have that throughout this document in terms of...
But not with something like an exemption. For example, if they said, well, it's only five inches bigger, probably the appropriate place would be to go into the code and see if it met the standards and that kind of thing, rather than saying, getting immediately into the argument of what is materially larger. This is a bright line for what is exempt and what is not exempt.
I hear what you're saying. Then I was looking at, where did it go? I think I'm jumping to page 12 and 14 of attachment 1A. 12 in the center and 14 on the bottom, right?
We can't hear yet. It up is on?
Yeah, it was on.
Okay.
I just wasn't speaking into it, sorry.
Okay.
You find the page? And I was looking at D2 under towers.
Okay.
And the third line down says, compatible with the backdrop, be made of materials compatible with the backdrop.
Correct.
And and the backdrop might be the trees. I didn't, the word, it seemed to me it might be something like materials visually compatible. I just wasn't sure. I mean, if you've got trees next to you, that mean you have to make it out of trees?
Right, right. This was the section that the planning commission pulled in from the Kirkland code provisions. You saw that when we were looking at some things in different jurisdictions. So we didn't really talk about it as specifically. I certainly could see making it visually compatible. I think that makes sense.
I'm just trying to make sure we understand what our standard is that we're comparing it with.
Right, so if the rest of the commission is fine with that, I'll add that word.
Then I drop to your page 18, attachment 1A, and it's the lower right. Center is page 16. And I'm looking at 18.60.190A4, replacement of a non-conforming. And we use the word communication facility of exactly the same height and dimensions. And I guess I was still trying to focus on whether the word should be materially rather than exactly.
Right, so this...
Just because things can change. They may not make 31 or 34 and a half foot.
Right, so this particular section, if we want to talk about it now, both AT&amp;T and I think T-Mobile commented on this one and the language in it, which if you want to look at, we handed out the email with the attached redline edits, and it's on page 17 of that email. There's 17 of the track changed version of that right at the very top. So the idea here, this was something that came up last time. And the context was that you would have a facility on a utility pole that was non-conforming to height or whatever. And the utility, because they had to periodically replace poles, would pull down the pole, and all of a sudden, the wireless communication facility would be in a kind of a world of hurt and have to go through the whole, do you guys remember this discussion? Go through the whole process again. So this section was intended to say, if the utility has to take down the pole and replace it with a new pole for their, to meet their standards, the wireless communication facility can stay there, even if it's non-conforming, through the minor adjustment process, as long as it's exactly the same height and dimensions. So the, let's say the utility pole facility is at 70 feet. And PSE says, we have to replace this pole, this pole is rotting or whatever's wrong with the pole. So we're going to put a, or we need a stronger pole, the winds are too strong. I don't know what. I'm trying to imagine a scenario. So they put up a 100-foot pole. So the goal is that it wasn't the wireless carrier's fault that the pole was replaced. PSE did it. So we want to give them, even though their facility is non-conforming, we want to say it's okay to put it back in exactly the same place, at exactly the same height as you previously had it, because this wasn't your fault. That's what this was trying to say. And I think we've talked about it, I've talked about it with Dawn and Debbie, and I think this language is unclear. And so we have a suggestion, which would say, replacement of a non-conforming wireless communication facility with a new wireless communication facility if located at exactly the same height and with the same dimensions on a replacement utility or light pole. So again, this is the category that you can apply for a minor adjustment under, rather than having to go through the major adjustment process.
So this is just replacing four, right?
Correct, correct.
Now we go through the minor adjustment. It doesn't have to be exact, but it has to be within the variations permitted?
Well, it would have to be exactly the same height and with the same dimensions as the old facility. So that doesn't address your concern, which is you wish there was some more flexibility in that language. And I'm not sure whether you mean to height or you mean to dimensions. If they didn't meet the minor adjustment criteria the way it's written, they would move to a major adjustment and a new application, actually.
Because it's non-conforming.
Right, because it's non-conforming.
And I was just concerned with the word exactly. And I didn't, I guess is where I was concerned. Because over a couple of years, you can never replace something exactly.
You say that on the same height, you don't use the word exactly.
So I need to hear from the commission on this issue.
So I'm trying to understand this, too. So how it's written in the document you gave us is in gray, highlighted in gray, but the red part where it says exactly is crossed out.
That's AT&amp;T's comment. Those are AT&amp;T's edits.
Okay, so we want to have a discussion whether we will take that recommendation or leave it as written?
I think rather than try to wordsmith it if we step back and look at the policy direction, again, the idea is you have a non-conforming facility. Likely, it's too tall. That would be the most common reason for it to be a non-conformance. And so again, the utility says we have to take the pole down, and we're going to put a new pole up. So the question, the policy question is, do you want to make that a minor adjustment regardless? Do you only want to care about the height? Do you want to care about all dimensions? Assuming you want to keep it in the minor adjustment, so they don't have to do a major adjustment. It's sort of back to that earlier question. Do we care about height or do we care about the dimensions?
Well, we just need to be consistent.
Well, I would note the AT&amp;T language, if I read this, reading the right one, says substantially the same height, and we say exactly the same height. So it sounds like AT&amp;T is looking for a little flexibility on height. Is that, can I call up the AT&amp;T folks? Could you maybe address, I just want to make sure, it seems like that's the, you know, from your language to Lori's proposed language. Is that the distinction that...
Yeah, we're not actually asking for more height. It's just that we lack the control over PSE. When they put the pole in, it is likely not going to be exactly the same, because they're burying a portion of the pole, you know, they're, but they control it, is all I'm saying. The pole might be two inches wider. It might, you know, or it might be three inches shorter. You know, there's variability there that we don't control.
Right. From a legal standpoint, the word substantially, what does that, what does that mean?
It does provide more flexibility. And then you have to go through the exercise of what substantially means. Approximately, is it minimum, maximum? I was, I'm sitting here trying to go through all the different terms that we use, and because we use them, someone would say, well, we've already used materially, so that's not substantially. And we've already used up to five feet, so we know if they go beyond five feet, that must... So actually, if that is, if exactly is not perhaps the policy direction, putting in actual numbers might be more appropriate. You know, if you say substantially or approximately, no more than here to provide that flexibility. I think that might be easier for people in the future to understand.
Which begs the question, what is the number?
Correct. If you want to change the language...
Do we need to pull out a number or?
Five.
We've used five before.
In other parts of this document.
Five is for minor adjustment, that's right.
Right, previous.
Right.
Is the focus here on making sure that the wireless portion that's on top of the pole remains virtually the same? You say exactly. So whatever that height becomes, it becomes.
Right, but the wireless piece would not go to the height. For example, if a 50-foot pole, if a 38 and a half-foot utility pole were replaced with a 50-foot utility pole, that does not mean that the wireless communication facility can go back at the top of the pole. It means it would be in its same location, no taller than it was previously.
Even though utility pole was higher.
Even though the pole may be higher.
Right.
So that would be considered a minor adjustment, not requiring a brand-new permit, correct?
Well, you, right, you would go through, it would be a permit process. A minor adjustment is one of those administrative processes that the director makes a decision, et cetera.
Right, but because it's substantially the same as it was before, do we need to actually use that word, that the height location has not changed? I mean, would that be exact? Then it becomes the responsibility of the utility company replacing the pole. I mean, how do we know how that's coordinated? Do the utility companies take off the communication facility?
Well, they leased the communication facility, so I'm sure there's some coordination there, yeah.
Do they lease the communication facility or they lease the spot on the top of the pole?
I don't know.
That I don't know.
I don't know.
Sure.
I guess I was assuming the communication facility is by the provider.
PSE owns, I'm sorry, Ken Lyons, AT&amp;T. PSE owns the pole, and we lease space at the top of the pole. They construct the pole, they handle all the engineering of it. Keep in mind, we're talking about wood poles, you know. So they have certain tolerances, if you will, for what type of the pole, class-two pole versus a class-3B pole or whatever the case might be. But we don't have any control over exactly what pole they put in. And of course, it's a little bit approximate, because keep in mind, they're burying a portion of the pole. It doesn't actually have a foundation. It's buried into the ground. So that's why there's variability in terms of the width or the height. But I think what I, if I understand correctly, the dimensions of the wireless facility, intent was not to make the wireless facility itself bigger, but the pole, which it is attached to, may have some variability based on what PSE designs and what their installers use and what pole happened to be available for them, so.
That is correct. The idea was that the wireless communication facility itself, if it were standing in space without anything supporting it, would look exactly the same before and after the pole replacement.
Right, and it's not, and this is in the case of a non-conforming one.
Correct.
So, yeah, we don't want to deviate too much on this.
Linda, did you want to?
So Lyndi Atkins for T-Mobile. What I would suggest you think about is if you say something is exactly the same height and exactly the same dimensions, that means that if, for example, if the new pole is a quarter inch wider, then it's not eligible for this treatment. And I do think that, I mean, this is based on my, you know, 27, 28 years of experience as a lawyer, working with staff people in permit departments. I think that people do know what substantially similar means. So in my mind, that would be a... So in, in my mind, that, that would be a phrase that would allow for that quarter inch of the difference in the tolerances. Or let's say, you know, the carrier's new antenna, and this does happen, you know, the manufact, antenna manufacturers change, antenna dimensions might change, you know, the new antennas might be, you know, an inch taller and a half an inch wider. You know, from a, so from a policy standpoint, the question would be, do you want dimensional changes of that small a magnitude to be kicked out of the minor adjustment process? I think that's the way to think about it.
I, I think, I need to clarify that the idea here is not that the pole itself has to be exactly the same height and dimensions. It's the facility on the pole. Now, I could see a circumstance, truly, where you have your WCF and you need to put it back and the pole is now three inches wider and your bracing isn't the right size. So you've got to get your antennas on it and they're not going to be the same dimension, exactly the same dimension. So I certainly see that perspective. And maybe we do need to think about a little more flexibility in the way this is worded.
Well, could we, I mean, could we have an, either an EG or some guidance language like, you know, 5% or 10% different in dimension? I mean, you know, just something that a frame of reference.
Let me come back and look at this.
I don't know. Huh?
Yeah.
Oh.
So I guess there's two questions. So just kind of indicate, does everyone, who sees kind of a need for more flexibility than the language "exactly"?
I would just take out the word "exactly" and then, then your reviewer will have discretion.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna introduce a, a different approach perhaps. Rather than trying to, if that's the right word, qualify same height with either "exactly" or "substantially," is there a way to bring in the idea that the utility pole, you know, within the variabilities that the utility pole owner can introduce, right? And I don't know if that's subject to the variations of the replacement pole by the utility owner, you know. I agree, maybe striking "exactly," striking "substantially," just go with of the same height and dimensions as, or as near as practicable, given the variations in the business of replacing utility poles. Those are terrible words, but you get my meaning, right?
There is practical. Practical.
We haven't had that conversation in a couple of years. Well, from a, I guess from a legal wordsmithing, does that sound viable? Given that, I think you do want to have some level of flexibility, but, you know, with, within.
Yes. I think that provides that flexibility if things need to be tinkered with.
The other thought I had when I read this is, and this is something that's, I think, burdened me or slowed us down maybe a little bit from the beginning, is, you know, we, we kind of make the assumption that lower is better, right? Higher is worse, lower is better. And that's a, really a matter of perspective. What are you looking at? What are you viewing? And what is this potentially interfering with the view of? If, using your example, Lori, if PSE changed from a 70-foot pole to a 100-foot pole and we craft language that would say, "You have to put your antenna array back at 70 feet to fall under the, the minor adjustment clause," well, 70 feet might not actually be the optimal height. 80 feet might be preferred or 90 feet, depending what's really in your view at 70 feet. And I'm thinking about that more as I look out the window here. That antenna array, if it was 10 feet higher, I wouldn't, I don't know, the microphones probably don't pick this very well, but I'm pointing out the window at an antenna array that just happens to be at a height that we can all see it. But if it was really six feet higher, we wouldn't see it from this room. So it's just an example of where trying to be always fighting for a lower height doesn't always work to our advantage. I guess it depends what you're looking at and where you're sitting.
I might just point out the criteria for the minor adjustment number four. Approval of the minor adjustment will result in a better outcome for the community than would strict adherence to the existing standards. So certainly there's some, look at at least the existing standards versus the nonconforming situation. If you don't do a minor adjustment, you could do a major adjustment. I suppose the question is whether the commission would want to force, you know, whether that would come out in public testimony or we need to think about another criteria? I don't quite know how to do that. Do you have any ideas? Let me think about that. Okay. All right, we're, we're going to have to think about that one. We're creating, I mean, there's always an exception to every rule, right? So in this case, maybe 10 feet higher on the pole would be better. But we can't craft regulations for every possible scenario. So what we've tried to do is say, "Here are the standards. If you want to vary them a little bit, here's a minor adjustment. If you want to vary them a lot, go for a major adjustment and then show us why it's better for the community." You know, that you're solving a problem. So that's the way it's structured. And I guess we're a little uncertain about how we would go in the opposite direction to reinforce increased height if it's better for the community, except through the adjustment processes.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they're there, right?
Right.
But I, but I think in this particular case, it is for the benefit of the communications facility companies to have some mechanism that they can use a minor adjustment, especially when they're leasing a pole that gets replaced. You know, if you're going to use that scenario, there has to be some way to define what a minor adjustment is for their benefit, you know?
So what I, what I heard is that for this number four, you perhaps are interested in replacement of a nonconforming wireless communication facility with a new wireless communication facility if located at the same...
Of the same height as near as practicable and without increasing...
Same dimensions.
Right. It was the same dimensions.
Yeah. And not, not what I put in there.
Right.
Right.
As near as practicable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here.
Okay, thanks. Let's see, Dennis, were you, did you have any more? I think we were on your...
Not at the moment.
Comments. Not at the moment, okay. Mike, did you have some?
Yeah. This is really pretty early in the document, so, in the purpose section.
Yeah.
Let's go back to why we're doing this. Actually, this is marked as a change. And just so I'm clear, Lori, is this, are all the items marked in gray changes from existing code?
No. So in this particular chapter, 1860, it's pretty much rewritten. There is some holdover language, but it's all been moved around or restructured. The, the language that is in gray is language that was added after your last meeting.
Okay.
And I added this new area in B that talked about location of towers, satellite dishes, and antennas in non-residential areas and in areas without views to Lake Washington because I didn't think that that was clear in the purpose statement and it certainly seemed clear in your discussions.
Yes.
Okay, that was the first question I had was when that concept was introduced because I hadn't seen it before.
Right.
I followed as much as I could last week by telephone of the meeting, but if that was a part of the conversation.
We did, we did not really discuss that. As I was reading through the purpose statement, it was like glaring out at me that we hadn't said anything about that, given all the changes we made to those zones that have views to Lake Washington. So that, the planning commission hasn't really...
All right.
...talked about that.
Let me just talk for a moment about how I read that or how I interpreted it. When we talk about encouraging, I, I agree with the first part, up to in non-residential areas. But when we get into the part marked in gray, in areas without views to Lake Washington, that seems kind of divisive to me as a community. That was my reading of it, that we're encouraging locating towers in neighborhoods without views. Let's assume it's all residential, right? And if you live by Kenmore Junior High with no opportunity for a view of Lake Washington, that's a better place for us perhaps to locate a tower than if you live in the Arrowhead community. And that felt inequitable.
Is it the, I, I, I see what you're saying. Is it the grammar, though? Could it be like in, in locations that won't interfere with views of Lake Washington? I mean, would that feel different? Because I, I see what you mean about like cutting off whole swaths and say, "Oh, those viewer is, where am I?"
There are some places that have nice territorial...
Well, that's, that's it too, right? There, there's that argument. I don't have a Lake Washington view, but I don't know if I feel my rights under this code should be any different than people that do.
Well, we've, we've made it very clear in the...
And I know that wasn't the intention, but I think that's how it was, that's how I read it.
In the tables, we've called out those, those zones.
View zones, they're called, specifically, I believe, called out.
And those weren't...
So she's trying to represent that.
Yeah, those were determined by the city planners. We didn't come up with those. But in locating these facilities, I think it is prudent to, you know, talk about the view zones, but maybe the wording that says "without Lake Washington views" is kind of a negative connotation.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I think realistically, people know that if you buy a house in a view zone, you're going to pay a lot more money. So there's a, there's a need to compensate that landowner for their view.
Well, and it's also...
By protecting it.
The, the areas along 522.
Sure.
I mean, it's not just simply residential.
Yeah, it's a view, and those view zones are nothing that we came up with. Those criteria were set by the planning or the development, you know, zoning process that happened a long time ago.
It's view, it's view zone.
Yeah. You know, maybe an alternative approach to how that section B is written could be, rather than, maybe I'm just being semantic, but rather than encouraging the placement of towers in areas without views, to change the negatives, to discourage, yeah, maybe that's less offensive to me, discourage the location of towers where they would interfere with existing views of Lake Washington. For some reason, that orientation of the sentence seems less divisive to me.
Deborah, could you repeat the words that you used, which sort of took it out of the whole area discussion?
Well, I said, I mean, you basically said it, locations that wouldn't interfere with views of Lake Washington. But, but, but I think Carol's point is well-taken. It's really, it's the zones. I mean, it's not just like in this zone, this house. It's, it's not. It's, it's literally zoned by zone. We didn't do spot zoning here. We did zone by zone, right? So it's, it's, I, as much as I said that language, I actually think saying, using the right terminology is, is probably better. Non-residential areas and view zones.
And the, and the details about this purpose statement actually get spelled out very clearly
Elsewhere.
In the elements.
Yeah.
Mike, if, if we use the term "and in view zones," we, we haven't really said, we've, in the table, we've said that they are, I think we have called them out as view zones.
Oh.
It's a little, so could I suggest language?
Well, yeah, you...
Yeah, we do call them the view zones.
Yeah.
You could just stay consistent.
Right.
So I'd just include the word "in outside view zone areas." You don't even have to say more "and" to minimize.
We could just say outside view zones.
Correct. Yeah.
And that's consistent with our priorities list too, right?
Mm-hmm. Does that, I'm seeing heads nod.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's, if it's better. I think where I got stuck was, I'm wondering if the sentence doesn't improve by doing Would it be okay to end this purpose statement? Well, I, I'm wondering maybe just, or that clause of the sentence anyway, after non-residential areas? I mean, obviously, this, this section doesn't have any enforcement ability or teeth, right? I mean, this is just a declaration.
No, it's something that you would look at if you were reviewing a proposal, the purpose, or the purpose statement of the zone.
It sets, I mean, it sets the framework...
Right.
...for your more specific policies. And, I mean, we spent a lot of time splitting hairs there and calling out those, what is called view zones in here, although it isn't actually stated that way in the priority list.
It is that way in the chart, though.
It, no, I know it's that way in the chart, but we may want to just make that language consistent, so, I don't know. I, I, I think it is, I think it's a useful addition because it fits, it makes our grid align with the purposes, the, so, yeah.
It, it also introduces those purpose statements more specifically. So rather than approaching it from the negative, you know, just saying, "Part of our purpose in creating these is to protect our views."
Well, what do you mean by "our"?
Well, "the views," in the view zones.
So if you can, yeah, maybe that's a good way to do it.
I know what you're after, though, is this seems more personal than our charts. Because our charts were, there's already a zone, if you're in it, you're in it, if you're not, you're not.
Right.
But this seems more personal.
I guess some of it depends too on, on how you feel about the presence of antennas in your neighborhood.
Right.
And you, if you feel antennas are, you know, a negative impact on the visual appeal of your neighborhood, then you might be put off by this goal statement or purpose statement.
Although the way it currently reads, at least what I've tried to put together here, is "encourage the location of towers, satellite dishes, and antennas in non-residential areas and outside view zones and minimize the total number of towers and alternative transmission support structures throughout the community."
That makes way more sense. I think that's much clearer. Because that's what we tried to do in the splitting hairs.
Right. It's one of the basic premises, yeah.
Say that again, because I think there was a double negative issue there on the outside views.
"Encourage the location of towers, satellite dishes, and antennas in non-residential areas and outside view zones."
So you want to encourage them in view zones?
"Encourage outside view zones."
Yeah, she...
Oh, not outdoors. Okay.
Outside of the view zone. So excluding the view zones.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and remember that the, the view zones, those were created not just to serve residential views. Those were created to protect public views.
Right, exactly.
From 522 and 181st and up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think... Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's preferred language to me. Okay, is everybody on board with that language?
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with the word "outside". I would go with "non" or something. But I mean, because I tripped over it. I didn't know what you were talking about.
Beyond view zones?
Yeah, other than view zones, or some, I don't know.
Okay, and, non.
Outside sounds...
But if you're, if you're trying to describe as...
Non-view zones.
A location that is not in the view zone, how would you say that?
I would say "non-view zones".
That's fine.
Okay.
But, or, yeah, something outside. I don't know. We're splitting hairs.
That's okay. Got it. We're there.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, did you have, you, you have the floor for any other thoughts at this point? You know, in Section A, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this, but you call out, we've called out, um, you know, that we provide, this is the same purpose section, "to promote public safety and the general welfare." I, I guess there's a lot of other factors, um, that come into play here. And I don't know if we need to list them all, but, you know, there's the concept of, of commerce and other reasons that having, uh, a wireless communications code is important. And we, and we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that, but how, how did we land, Laurie, just on public safety and general welfare?
That is actually language from the existing code.
Original, yeah. So, I don't know when that was, around 2000 or whatever, maybe?
Yeah, I think it was 2006, I want to say.
And if I may also, that's just very standard language for cities. They act on behalf of the public safety in general, so that's really just kind of mechanical words you put in almost every ordinance.
Yeah. Does public welfare implicitly include the, you know, economy and do we need to, is that what you're saying, Mike? We need to maybe spell that out more explicitly in this? Is that what you're thinking? You know, I don't think for the purposes of this, we have to necessarily, but just as, uh, you know, maybe as, as you described what this was good for, as we interpret any part of the section based on, you know, what we might refer back to in the, in the purpose section. To me, one of the compelling reasons of getting all of this right is that people can, you know, kind of effectively engage in their livelihood. And I've talked about that before, right, how important cell coverage is to people in certain industries in this town. More so, I would argue, than views. You know, people that pay their mortgage or their food bills based on having reliable data coverage all day, every day.
Right. I wonder if we might look at Subsection E, "enhance the ability of the providers of wireless communication services to provide such services to the community quickly, effectively, and efficiently", and then add something about "and support commerce" or, um, add something into that phrase.
To support personal and business use?
I mean, the goal of the statement is to lay out the fact that Kenmore wants to be a place where people, when they come here, they can connect, you know? And the point was well taken. We, I mean, I came with three devices in my briefcase, so there you go.
So adding a phrase, "effectively and efficiently to support personal and business use"?
Sure.
I like that.
Okay.
Everybody, I'm seeing lots of heads nod.
Yep, that's good. And chances are, people who would come to the public hearing are going to look through those purpose statements. They may not dig into the details, except for in an area that they have an interest. But, you know, skimming those purpose statements helps to set a tone for what our intent is.
Any, anything else, Mike? This is maybe just a clarification from last week's meeting that I didn't catch every word of, but in the, um, review 1860 dot 50, the, the chart, where we've left the Xs for prohibited use in the tower section for the, um, majority of the columns, is the introduction of the footnote five next to towers, is that relative, is that new since our last?
Right, that is a cross-reference and, and actually AT&amp;T and T-Mobile had requested that cross-reference. The major adjustment process was always intended to also address prohibited uses if need be, but this makes it explicit that, that you would go to that section of the code and look at the major adjustment process for a way to consider a tower in a prohibited, otherwise prohibited zone.
So it's prohibited with an adjustment process?
It's prohibited unless you get a major adjustment. And if you get a major adjustment, then it would no longer be prohibited. You would be allowed that specific facility.
Right. Okay. I'm good.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, Carol?
I do have one question for clarification. It's in that same section, but I'm trying to pull it up on the original document, and it, can you explain to me why in the tower section of the matrix, under, it, it's highlighted in red that we...
I think you're looking at the AT&amp;T comments.
Okay, so the, these are their requests.
Correct.
But in our, um, original document, it just says "a maximum height up to 80 feet", correct?
No, our document says the maximum height where it's allowed is up to the height limit as specified in the underlying zoning district.
Okay. Okay, I see what I, why I had that question.
Okay.
Did Mike, were you done with your?
Mm-hmm, I was.
Could I make just one quick comment? And Deborah raised this, but under our locational priorities, you had me add the view zones, but we do not call them out, and Deborah pointed that out. And I wonder if we could say, "number nine, new tower in the UC West WC or CB view zones"?
Yeah, and same with five.
Or just put a paren behind that and note that those are the view zones.
Yeah, it goes with number five and number nine.
Yeah, yeah. Are you comfortable with that? Thank you.
Do you have any more, Carol?
I don't.
Okay, I had, I had two or three, mostly clarifying questions, too. Okay, on 1860.190, on the minor adjustment on number, I guess it's B4, under that section on, on page 17 on our copy. It says, "approval of the adjustment will result in a better outcome for the community than with strict adherence to the existing standards." Just, do we have any kind of definition for "better outcome", or is that just dependent on the, the adjustment process deciders? Is that just a...
I think it would be dependent on the adjustment decider, and, and to specify what that might be specifically would be difficult. Because maybe the better outcome is that by reducing the landscaping, uh, maybe it's a landscaping issue, and it's better because you're, um, you're providing a really, really thick screen rather than the requirement, which is a really sparse screen. Or maybe the better outcome is that we're giving you five feet of additional height so you can keep your facility on, um, in these, uh, five feet above the maximum allowable, and you're going to be able to keep your facility in its location rather than moving it to someplace else where it would be worse. So you can't really specify because you don't know what the issue is.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's see, then, then one right below that on 18.60200, under, under the major adjustment requirements. Just a, a sort of a clarification in, in the first one, A, in that one, it said, "major adjustment may, may be used to modify wireless communication facility development standards, not reviewable through the minor adjustment process, as well as to allow an otherwise prohibited use." Does, does that mean that under any, would there be any scenario that they could perhaps, you know, put a tower in a view zone? Under, under, going through this process with all the criteria, I mean, is that, that's at least a potentially feasible outcome depending on?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Well...
That's kind of why we have the adjustment process. I just wanted to clarify that that could be...
Correct.
An outcome, okay.
And, and these are areas...
The burden would be quite high, but it's at least possible.
These are areas that were also had some red lines, so I don't know whether we want to talk about those at the same time, but...
Yeah, why don't we get back, I just had one more clarification, then we'll, then we'll turn to the AT&amp;T and other questions. And then on farther down, uh, excuse me, further down on that, um, under 2A, it talks about "a decrease based on a visual analysis of negative visual impacts, including but not limited to visual clutter", and I, just on a wordsmithing, it's, there's some double negatives going on there. Wonder if we could just say, um, you know, fewer visual impacts based on an actual visual analysis, including but not limited to visual clutter? So we have, you have a decrease of negative visual impacts, and I just found that a little hard to... Can we say something to the effect of fewer negative visual impacts, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to turn to Dawn with this, because this is...
And I'm looking at that, too. Could you say that again?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so it says, right now, it says, "a decrease based on a visual analysis of negative visual impacts, including but not limited to visual clutter", and I guess I'm seeing a couple of, sort of a double negative decrease in, in...
Negative.
Negative, so could you say fewer negative visual impacts?
Based on a visual analysis.
Just a...
Correct, that, that works.
Clarity, okay. Everybody in favor of that? It's just wordsmithing.
Yeah, reduced or fewer, see?
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I had. Does anybody else have anything before we, you know, turn to the, the comments from the providers? Okay.
How do we want to go through these? How do we want to go through?
Okay, so we could approach this a couple of different ways. We can go through the redlined version and, and give you the staff response, and then you can ask questions of the AT&amp;T representatives. And then also Linda Atkins with T-Mobile had three areas where she was asking for some amendments. So shall we start with the AT&amp;T letter? Okay, so this is the redlined version, and the first recommended change is on page five. And again, the changes would increase the height limits for antennas on utility or light poles to 65 feet, and then for towers in those zones where they are permitted, would increase the height up to 80 feet. So the fundamental question before the Planning Commission is whether you wish to revisit the height limits. Staff would recommend against that, given your history of discussion, but that's your choice.
Does anybody care to revisit that discussion? No.
I would like to not revisit it.
Yes.
I still favor the 65, because it was the same number as we used for the amateur radio. I'm just looking for something to be the same, instead of every time you read a clause, it's a different number.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect, or how, how would you propose to?
Well, well, yes.
You, you have that privilege?
I would move that with regard to the antennas on utility or light poles, that we change the maximum from 50 to 65.
Throughout the zones?
For clarification, is that throughout all the zones?
No, all but the, I think all but the view zones.
Is that correct, Dennis?
Right. Basically, the motion is to make it look as has been proposed in this memorandum.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Well, I think, didn't we kind of exempt, essentially exempt the ham operators? I mean, essentially, we made the 65, because there's like, three of them in the city. I mean, you know, I mean, it was kind of this odd exception, and they don't have the ability to really do permitting processes. That was my impression, so...
What this becomes, if you were to pass it, is simply becomes what is taken before the people to get their public comment, and we may find that we get too much objection.
Well, if we do, then we'll see.
Anything we propose will go to public comment and, and to City Council, correct? Right? Any further discussion on, or, or consideration before we call for a vote? I know I have a thought in here somewhere. If I'm recalling, I'm thinking back several meetings, because...
Yeah.
But the conversation I remember with Ken Lyons was that at 50 feet, it would be almost triggering an automatic, um, adjustment process every time they wanted to cite antennas on a utility pole. And that, if true, um, seems to not be consistent with one of the purpose statements that we've set out, which is to be efficient and effective and quick. So I was hoping through the process, we would be able to find a height limit that would take care of our wireless providers in the ordinary cases of doing business, and then reserve the, um, special approval process for those outliers. Like, they want to go too high, and we need to get public comment on that, or we need to get, um, someone to review that.
I, I think that's true. I, I want to just refresh that you voted on this exact issue at an earlier meeting, and again, you always have the opportunity to change your mind, but the, the vote to set these standards was a 6-0 vote, and, um, and again, you always can change your, your mind, but you have revisited this topic.
And we already compromised. I mean, we, we already increased it.
That's my recollection as well, so...
I, I agree. We have voted on it before. It was also before we've had a lot of the commentary
Okay.
and changes, so it's just to find out whether that should also change or not.
So can you describe again to us what the motion is?
Basically, in the row for antennas on utility or light poles, instead of the maximum being the 55, this would go to 65. And it's, it's basically the, that row as proposed in the, uh, the redline amendment.
And you said that the reason you wanted to...
And you said that the reason you wanted to see that happen is because we do make an exception for the ham radio operators.
That was my original reason when we had discussed it earlier. But at this time though, part of it relates to the fact when we're talking about the, the twenty versus the twenty-two feet that they needed, that we were forcing them to do adjustments every time based upon what they knew were the technical requirements now. Uh, this would get rid of those requirement for a heavier, uh, review process by going to the slightly higher.
Well, if that were true, that means, you know, are all of their existing facilities nonconforming, I don't know that that's true. So, I mean, is that, is that true, all, every single one of their facilities are nonconforming right now?
Uh, under the new rules, all but I think the best earwater tower would be nonconforming.
To you guys.
All right, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, do we have an, that's a very interesting data point, I didn't know that. Do we know if, how that balance changes, number or percentage roughly that would be conforming versus nonconforming at sixty-five?
Yeah, I can't put my finger, here we go, I can't put my finger right on it. At sixty-five feet, uh, one, two, it looks like two of the existing, one, two, three, four, would, uh, be conforming, they are at six, two are at sixty feet, one is at eighty feet and one is at eighty-eight feet on a utility pole.
So we only have a handful of facilities in the whole city?
Four, on utility poles.
Four, in the whole city?
That is the information that we found going through our records.
That was four above sixty-five?
No, that's.
Four period.
Four period, yes.
Okay.
But none below sixty.
Interesting, it's only four.
Any further discussion? Uh, why don't we have a, a roll call vote?
So can you review again, so one is currently at, so.
There are two at sixty and one at eighty and one at eighty-eight.
The two at sixty, okay. And, and the five feet, we.
Through the minor adjustment process.
Right, okay, so, right.
Minor adjustment, uh, would be request for up to five feet in additional facility height above the maximum allowable height, except in the view zones, would be a minor adjustment.
Even if it's nonconforming?
I'm sorry, Lori, could you repeat that?
I thought you were asking me if you had a, if you wanted to move to sixty feet and if the height limit is fifty-five feet, what would be the process? And it would be the minor adjustment, well, it's, uh, fifty-five, let's see here. Fifty-five feet in some of the zones, then you could move to sixty feet, uh, with a minor adjustment, except in the view zone and in the residential, it would be to fifty-five feet through the minor adjustment process.
Okay, I guess what I was asking about is.
But those are new facilities, nonconforming facilities are handled differently.
Well, right, and what you're saying is that all four are nonconforming now.
With the new regulations.
Well, yeah.
They would be nonconforming.
Assuming that this is passed, they'd all be nonconforming, so even to replace them, given the language we just talked about.
Unless you went through the ECFM process, which allows conforming or nonconforming facilities to be modified to a certain degree. Remember that FCC process?
Too many things.
Are you?
Do you guys, you guys are good?
Well, just a process question before we begin.
Yeah.
Is, is it Mark, your intention that we would entertain motions on any redline change this evening?
I think, why don't we address this one and then we can go through the other ones and see how we want to proceed. I, I misspoke, I think on a roll call, I don't think we need a roll call, I think we can just do a standard, a standard vote, I, I apologize for that. So, hearing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion, uh, say aye?
Well, repeat the motion, please, which.
The motion is to accept the change proposed by AT&amp;T to change in all zones but the view zones, the maximum height on a utility or light pole to sixty-five feet.
For antennas on.
Four antennas.
Yes.
On utility or light poles, right.
These are new ones, obviously, right?
Correct.
New ones.
Correct. Okay, everybody understand the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three.
Uh, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, and I have Doug Nugent's proxy and I'm going to, uh, vote, uh, no on his proxy. So that makes it three of three.
Who are we missing?
Yeah.
We're missing somebody.
Mike's not here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And Doug, do give me his proxy.
Yeah, right. So it ties, so the motion fails.
Okay. Okay, what's the next, uh?
Well, the next one is their eighty-foot tower request. But. Do you want to go, are you, are we going through by exception or how are we doing?
I think we need to go through these ones individually, there's not that many of them, correct, Lori?
Right, we've already discussed some of them, so the question would be whether you want to reconsider the height limit for towers.
Entertain a motion, discussion?
Does anybody want to move to accept this, is the question? And if nobody does, then we're, all right.
Well, we've only identified maximum heights for two of the columns, is that because they're conditionally permitted?
Correct.
Do we have a maximum height for the instances where they're prohibited, but?
No, that would, you would have to address that through the major adjustment process because it's a prohibited use unless you go through that process.
Okay, and that doesn't have a fixed height limit?
Correct.
That's more of a subjective test?
Correct.
Any preference, any, any thoughts?
Nobody has moved to accept it, so we just.
Would anybody like to make a motion on that particular point?
Okay. So the next, uh, proposed change has to do with, it's on the next page, number six, it has to do with, um, the, the criteria for, uh, conditional use permit and AT&amp;T is requesting that the criteria about the gap in service be removed and also that the criteria about providing a customary and expected business service to the site, uh, be removed. That was one that the planning commission specifically had asked be added.
Yeah.
And we actually had, um, talked about this previously and had said we did not feel that this needed to be removed and the question of, of showing that there's a gap in service, this is to, again, allow a use that's only conditional, that requires extra scrutiny.
I mean, that seems like the, the pivotal purpose, I mean, if it's not filling a gap. I, I, I mean, do you have any sense of why that was problematic?
I don't.
Okay.
You can certainly ask.
Well, no, I'm not, I don't want to, I just was curious whether they ever expressed a reason and if they didn't.
Ken or Linda, feel free to.
Uh, I think that we had just made the suggestion that the, um, the gap test should be preserved for adjustments because it duplicates in both places. Um, if you look in the, the major adjustment, it talks about significant gap and we were suggesting that the gap test, uh, given the language differs between both of them, this one says a gap, the other one says significant gap, we thought it made sense to take it out of here and leave it for the adjustment process. Thank you.
Could we ask staff to, again, tell us why you want to leave it in?
Uh, well, it, there are cases where you have similar criteria for similar processes. The major adjustment is, of course, our stopgap, it's the most serious test, so we want to know that there's a significant gap. This, again, this test is to allow a use that's not allowed outright, that requires some extra scrutiny and I think we felt that if this is a use that we typically wouldn't want, why would we not ask to see a gap in service? Why would they not have to justify why they needed it?
Any comments?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a comment, I know we've talked about gaps a lot in service and defining what that means, but I'm wondering about, do gaps have to be in relation to existing technologies and expectations? In other words, when we, when we look at a gap, does it have to be in, in light of our current phones in our pockets and how we currently expect to use them or can those gaps be for technology or for devices that we don't yet have? In other words, can, can AT&amp;T or T-Mobile, um, successfully, under any of these standards, move forward on a conditional or, uh, adjustment process to build out an infrastructure for functionality we don't yet have? Does that make sense? New phones, new technologies, new things we'd like to be able to do where the infrastructure has to be in place before the devices become relevant.
I understand the question, I, I think from just reviewing the case law and the language itself, it has to be an existing service gap and to me, when you say the words existing, it means technology that we're currently using and that there's a hole, so you can't use your existing device, get through the hole to get to the other location, if you will, so it would be the former, not the latter. There is some language proposed later on, uh, in the same redline that suggests much broader, such as you were bringing up, and we can get to that later, but just the word service, it would be my interpretation's existing service with what you have right now.
Okay. So when we do get that, to that later, will, will there be opportunities for companies like AT&amp;T to make infrastructure investments so that as technologies are developed and devices can do more that we maybe can't even imagine right now? That, that we have a process and we have a code in place that enables them to do that?
Correct, I think they get to do that, those questions will definitely come up when you, you see the later text with regard to a ma- major adjustment. Um, was it a major adjustment? I think it was. But the policy question you're having for this, um, this is just, again, the conditional use permit, a different process. It, you could have a conditional use permit and a major adjustment in the same application or you could have one or, and not the other. So if the policy question of the planning commission is to say, well, let's add much more than you could, but the presented language doesn't include that.
Any thoughts?
So the, it might help me just to, to describe, so the change that's being requested would mean that if we had a request for a conditional use permit and they're primarily, uh, facilities in the residential zones, the single-family residential zones, those are the, most of the conditional use permits, it would mean that to achieve a conditional use permit, the applicant would have to show that alternative sites or, um, facilities with less impact to the community have been considered and that the visual impacts of the facility are minimized. So those are the tests and what would be eliminated was, is the notion of gap, so they would not have to show that there was a gap in service, it's just that they had looked at other alternative facilities and that visual impacts are minimized, so that's the difference.
Question? We use this quarter-mile standard elsewhere, so you're talking about the number of sites within a quarter mile of where they're proposing?
The infeasibility.
Yeah.
Analysis, yeah, I'm not sure that it, um, does it say that specifically? I know it says that in the community meeting and who can propose an alternative, it has to be within a quarter mile.
Well, they have two standards, one's a quarter mile and one's a thousand feet, I don't know why they're.
That's the mailing, the thousand foot. For the infeasibility analysis, mm-hmm, right, yeah, the quarter mile is not in the actual infeasibility analysis, that is in the, um, requirement for the community meeting and if, uh, if people propose sites or that they're assessing sites, that's within a quarter mile.
Ken, can, I'm sorry, can I, can I just clarify, you're saying that this, this gap is already considered in other parts of the process? So you're saying it's redundant here, did I understand that correctly?
I think, uh, we were just more concerned that there are, uh, you have a conditional use permit criteria that would include evaluating a gap in coverage and then, again, you're talking about going through the major adjustment where there's a different standard, uh, that applies to, essentially, we're talking about the same type of, you know, you know, we're, it says significant gap, this one says a gap in, you know, a coverage, let me see what exactly it says here, my apologies.
Sure.
So the current, uh, language says fill a gap in the applicant's wireless communication services, um, network. And we, but if you go to the major adjustment, it goes into significant gap in coverage, so.
Would, if we put significant gap, are you looking for consistency?
I think we were suggesting that for the conditional use permit for, that did, did not require an adjustment, then, uh, perhaps looking at the gap in coverage wasn't needed. But, you know, obviously, if you do a major adjustment, which, you know, given the discussion about heights and the like, many sites will require, you'll have to make an affirmative finding that you have a significant gap in coverage, uh, in order to be able to get a facility or get that adjustment built.
On the major adjustment, okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there ever a time that a conditional use wouldn't require any sort of adjustment process? I, I guess I'm not understanding.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
So that if, for example, you've wanted to do a facade antenna on a, uh, non-residential structure in a single-family zone, that's a conditional use permit and so you would have to meet the criteria.
And that would not have any adjustment process?
It wouldn't necessarily have any adjustment process.
So we need to have this gap language because otherwise there's no rationale. I mean, that.
Correct, and let me just clarify again, so a conditional use permit is a permitted use, it's just a little more impacts?
Yeah.
That adjustment is acknowledging that you are actually violating the code.
Right.
So there are many instances where CUP will not entertain the adjustment.
Right. They were trying to make the case that they were synonymous, but they're not, so.
Okay. Does anybody care to make a proposal or, um?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we accept. Yeah, I would make a motion that we accept the red line deletion of the gap language to the conditional use permit criteria. And my reason, if you care to hear it, is that I think evaluating all infrastructure investments based on gaps in current service levels is short-sighted. And, and I would think that we want to create opportunities for investment and improvements. And my understanding is that AT&amp;T would, or T-Mobile or any of the carriers, would not be looking at making infrastructure investments unless there was a compelling business reason to do so. They wouldn't do it to spend down their otherwise overflowing treasuries. But there would be some benefit to the community in, in making these improvements. And I wouldn't want to make it overly burdensome or to put anything in place that demotivates them from making infrastructure investments that might benefit us as their customers. So I'd support that deletion.
Okay, you want to make a...
I make a motion that we support the deletion at the top of page six.
Okay, any...
A second?
Second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just a brief comment. I mean, if it's, if they're only doing things that are filling a need, then they won't have any problem meeting that standard, I guess I would say. But I'd just like to have some sort of rationale for why we're building out.
Oftentimes, I would assume that industry that is looking at growing is looking at trends, and they can see that the public is starting to adapt to downloading a lot more movies and things. And so they can see that if that trend continues, they won't have the capacity. And so they don't want to be caught shorthanded. And if we put in the language, they're suggesting anyway, that if we leave the language as last proposed by us, that they wouldn't be able to react to trends because they haven't experienced the negativity yet.
I didn't say that. Oh, I didn't hear them say it.
The gap.
I didn't hear them say that that was going to hamper them to do that. But, I don't know.
Yeah, the concern I had, Deborah, was that the, the gap is against, the gap is measured, and I think our attorney tonight confirmed this when I asked. The gap that would qualify under this condition is against, measured against existing standards of technology, not potential future enhancements to technology. So, you know, using our current LTE service of digital cellular service, there may or may not be a gap, but there could be another generation of wireless communication that we want to benefit from. But since we don't have a gap in the current standard, they wouldn't be allowed to move into the conditional permitting process because there may be not a gap in the current standard. That, that's not the problem we're trying to fix.
And can you clarify that, because I don't read it that way? It says, "or provide a customary and expected business service to the site." So that seems to just open the door to exactly what the issue is. I don't, I don't know. Is that, can we get a interpretation?
So when I look at the first one, I do agree with the first interpretation. It's existing service. The secondary, provide a customary and expected business service. Again, I anticipate that that customary and expected business services, they have a product and it doesn't work, or they expect certain things from the existing service. Again, if you want to expand on that, that's my reading of what you have. If you want it more expansive, then we could add additional language.
Do you have some suggestions?
And, and I, and I have to apologize, too. I wasn't here when it was proposed by the commission, so I don't know the rationale for adding number two. And perhaps if one of, if the makers here, they could explain that more. I, who was, I don't know who proposed it?
Mike, I think that...
Oh, okay.
Mike, I think you had raised number two, provide a customary and expected business service to the site. We were talking about the ability to do point-to-point communications. And that that might be a reason to justify a certain use, conditional use.
Yeah, I was trying to expand the different uses beyond just maybe wireless communication as we as consumers experience it. That was more of a business-to-business scenario.
Was your intent the existing services?
It was still, it was still within the existing, yeah.
So just as you think about this, again, the conditional use permits are primarily in the residential zones, R1 through R6, for rooftop antennas, facade antennas, antennas on utility or light poles, and also then for towers in the non-residential zones and the parks and PSP, public semi-public zones. So that's what the conditional use permit is for. And so those are the kinds of facilities that you would be assessing under these criteria.
Well, and, I mean, this raises the larger question of the gap. I mean, if the gap issued doesn't take into consideration demand and their understanding of what demand is, how are they supposed to build anything? I guess I don't...
So I don't, so this criteria doesn't anticipate demand. What it's suggesting is you're building a facility, do you have a service, existing service need? It doesn't exclude them from looking at demand. It just simply says you can't meet the criteria with a future demand only. So you could have a service coverage issue, and, oh, by the way, this will also increase our ability to do those future demand trends, if you will. One doesn't exclude the other, you just need to show the first one.
Any other discussion on the, I believe we have a motion in a second? Any other thoughts, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Was, Carol?
I said, I said yes.
Okay, all right, so it's, gotcha. 4-1. Okay. All right, so the next section has to do with some changes to the amateur ham radio section. We had previously met and talked about this with the carriers, and there was no concern expressed, given that it was limited to amateur ham radio facilities. So I'm not sure if, if this was, one was an oversight or if AT&amp;T has some new concerns.
Which page?
Still on the same page, that...
Okay. So I, I think on that same page, that because this refers to amateur ham radio facilities, that, that we had agreed in principle that it was fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so bottom of page seven, facility would not be of sufficient height to meet the applicant's proposed area of coverage in Kenmore or to allow connection to other sites operated by the applicant. So this is determining infeasibility. And there is another request on the next page having to do with physical zoning or environmental constraints. Their infeasibility criteria were also something raised by Linda Atkins. And... She had some specific language about the alternative fails to meet engineering requirements, and again, was referring to, I think, physical conditions of the property. At your last meeting, staff discussed these physical issues that could be used to achieve an infeasibility test, and staff recommended against those, feeling that they were not the kind of criteria that really limited... In other words, you wouldn't want to choose a site that had wetlands and say, well, that's infeasible. Well, you shouldn't even get there in the first place.
We did talk about that.
It was the straw man problem.
Right.
Yeah. She had a specific change to C as well, though?
Correct.
Did you catch that?
Right, and, and I do not have that.
It was, the alternative fails to meet engineering requirements for site characteristics such as location, ground space, and setbacks, and size, is what I heard her say.
Right.
But, and that does seem a bit more precise than the language that we have.
Right, and that, I think, was recommended previously in, in their comments, something similar. And we, again, felt that things like setbacks and size of property and that kind of thing, on its face, you could choose a prop...
Oh, I see, it fell into that same problem.
Right, exactly. Whereas the other criteria don't really fall under that same type of a concern.
They don't?
Yeah, come on up, Linda, sure.
So the, the language that I was suggesting is that this C would read, the alternative fails to meet engineering requirements for site characteristics such as location, size, ground space, setbacks, or similar characteristics. And in, so the size, perhaps the staff and I are thinking of different interpretations of the word size. So what I was thinking of is the situation, a common situation when you're evaluating alternatives is, you know, perhaps you're looking at a utility pole site as an alternative, and it's not viable because there's not enough room to put the equipment cabinet, or, you know, for some other reason, there's not enough, enough physical space to put the WCF that you're trying to construct. And that was the interpretation in my mind on the word size in this particular section. It was not referring to the, some, some characteristic of size that the applicant could control. You know, when, when you go out to look for alternatives, you, you have to choose among whatever properties are available within the area that you're trying to serve. And they may have, I mean, for example, AT&amp;T's change that refers to wetlands, it, it may be that, say, there's only three properties available within the area that you're trying to serve, and one of them has wetlands on it. So, I mean, that, that is a characteristic that would disqualify that site as a viable alternative and direct you to another site. And it's possible it could be a site that's closer to a residence. And, and those are the difficulties that you can have in trying to find a, a site in a particular area.
So Lori, can you review again? Because all of the, I, I'm having difficulty differentiating why any of these would not be considered kind of that same straw man argument. I mean, they, they all seem like you can pick and choose.
Okay, the easiest way probably for me to describe this is if you imagine a ring. Say you need a facility in a certain location.
Radius.
Right, in a certain radius. Say it's a quarter mile, if we were to be at a community meeting and we're talking about this. So you would try to find a site within that quarter mile. And our first preference priority is co-location. So is there an existing structure to support the antenna? And, and you might say, there is no structure within this ring that is strong enough, that's criteria A, to support these antenna. B, it would not be of sufficient height, so you don't have a structure that's tall enough, for example, to put the antennas on. The third one is there are engineering requirements for location and size. So this location, we can't get the signal out. And, and size, as she just described, would be that the, the size that you need is not available to put the, the equipment in, for example, and so on. Then we talk about interference with existing antennas, the fact that the property is not available for sale or lease. We then move into these other criteria, physical zoning or environmental constraints. Again, we're looking at a quarter-mile radius. You have to meet one of these tests to say something is infeasible. And it seemed that in a quarter mile, you could pick a property that had environmental constraints and say, therefore, it's infeasible. It's, it's slightly, I don't know how to describe the difference, except that as we discussed it, it seemed that you could sort of pick and choose certain properties to make the test possible. Make the test fail, right.
But, but what I'm saying is you could do that for A, B, C, D as well. That's why I'm struggling with the distinction, but maybe it's just me. Is everybody else clear on the distinction? So... I mean, there's only going to be X sites available, right?
Right.
In a quarter mile.
Right.
That's probably not too many. So what would be, so you think there'd be enough that they could, enough in a quarter mile that they could pick and choose?
I do.
Oh, okay.
But their request is that we eliminate this letter F.
No, add it.
Want to add?
Want to add that, right.
Okay.
So they want more?
Yep.
They want more criteria.
It makes the test easier, is what I'm saying. It makes the infeasibility test easier.
Sure, yeah.
Every, every criteria that you add, when they only have to satisfy one, makes the test easier. So we can say, here's a parcel that's completely covered with wetlands. Bingo, the test is satisfied. Now, it's a little bit harder to actually go to the trouble of seeing what is for sale. Or is the, is the, is, are we going to have FAA height problems? Or are we going to have antenna interference problems? The tests are more difficult. But once you add in all these other factors, the test actually becomes pretty simple.
Well, I think, I think they're, they're superseding, I mean, what they say is they have to look within the things that are available. So, I mean, maybe that needs to be kind of overarching all of these? Because, I mean, it doesn't make sense to look at things that aren't available, right? So, I mean, it just seems like E is kind of, goes at the very beginning, right, somehow? I don't, I... I mean, there's, anyway, well, that's just me. Never mind, just...
Yeah, I'm personally, I personally am satisfied with, you know, Lori's proposal. I think, I think there's enough, enough options there for, for reasonable, you know, citing options. That's my, that's my view.
To make it, the infeasibility part.
Right, so they have a good chance, but it's not, you know, so easy as to be meaningless.
Right.
Dennis, Mike, Carol?
I'm a little confused, I think. So I understand that people may game to try and get the best outcome. But are they the only ones that get to select the sites that might work? Why?
Because they, that's the, the way the test is set out. That they, they have to show that something is infeasible, so they go to the, they check out...
I understand how, why you want it that way.
Yeah.
But if you think there's an alternate site, can't you ask them to tell you why that site won't work? I mean, if, if you're worried about them gaming it, then you've got to give yourself an option. If you don't see the option and they don't present it, then you've got a problem. But if you're, you know, why limit to what they select if you're worried about them gaming?
So my only thought on that is that generally, cities are not in the position of designing, proposing, especially on private property. Because that would really entail outside of the right-of-way, and even in the right-of-way, it's a private pole. It's not, it's rarely a city-owned pole or facility. And so you allow the applicants to do that type of work and approach the private parties for a reason. I think as opposed to the cities saying, look at that really nice piece of property that's privately owned and probably... of property that's privately owned and probably may or may not want a pole." That's why you step yourself away from that and have them go through the burden of it.
Well, I understand them going through the burden of it, but now complaining they'll game it, so.
And that's why you try to do as objective as you can to hinder that ability.
Yeah, I personally think of objective as the key word. I think that's what your criteria are getting at, less squishy. Mike?
Carol, you got, have any thoughts on this? You're good with the staff language?
How about you, Mike?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, I think we're good with the staff language on that one.
Sorry, so the next two comments are the same comment. It's on page nine and on page 10. The question was whether the term used should be the planning director rather than the city manager, but you'll recall from previous amendments that city manager is a defined term that says it's the city manager or his or her designee, and that throughout the code we use the term city manager. So this is not, so it should in fact read city manager, that's why it's italicized to emphasize that it's defined. And then, so the next changes, antennas on a utility or light pole, page 13. The, AT&amp;T had asked that the current concealment standard is that antennas shall be fully concealed within the utility or light pole or otherwise camouflaged to be an integrated part of the utility or light pole. And they have asked that antenna, that the phrase flush mounted be added, that antennas could be flush mounted. And I certainly could see allowing flush mounting, but I think there would have to be a dimensional standard added to that. In some parts of the code, flush mounting is six inches from the pole, and others it's 12 inches from the, I think it's the face of the building. So it's the arm, and then it's the antenna itself. So I, this actually would be, I think, a question for AT&amp;T about what they mean by flush mounting.
Well, don't we have, yeah, don't we have a definition of that elsewhere?
Yeah, can you just incorporate that definition?
Well, we have two, I think we have two different definitions. There's a six inch requirement in one place, and I think 12 inches in another, if you wanted to recommend one.
Candor and Linda, you want to address that point?
Yes, we were just recommending that the flush mounting be added. If it's six inches or 12 inches, the only important thing to remember is that, I would just ask staff to clarify, do you mean six inches from the face of pole to the outside of the antenna, or the sp, or between the face of the pole and the back of the antenna?
Yeah, that's always the question.
Because antennas nowadays, a lot of them are about six inches wide themselves. So if it means within six inches or within 12 inches of the pole, I would just request that that means from the face of the pole to the, to the back of the antenna. And that basically just gives you enough room to put the bracket on to, again, flush them, kind of, well, you can't see it anymore. But the flush, to put the antennas as close to the pole.
We had it raised, Ken.
That's right, six feet, right? We can no longer see it. So anyway, we were just suggesting adding flush mounting to make it specific so that we would know how we should be mounting, either camouflaged or flush mounted, or fully concealed, yeah.
Right, okay. Do you, six inches a foot?
Six inches to the back of the antenna for the mounting bracket.
Sounds fine.
And then there'll be, it'll actually stick out a foot from the pole because of the six inches of the antenna.
Well, without that language, what would it have been? I mean, there would have been no limit.
Flush mounted.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, would that be then just open to industry standards? Or could we maybe, is that a better, I mean, do we know that six inches is a reason? I mean, is that a real number, or are we just picking that?
It's what he said.
You believe it? Ken went to law school, not science school.
Actually, I did not go to law school. In fact, I'm not a lawyer.
Oh.
I just happen to work for a law firm, carry around attorney business card. I don't get the same cred as Linda Atkins here does, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, typically, you know, we see, we see standards between six inches and 12 inches. The only thing you have to count for antennas is that oftentimes they aren't put directly in the pole at a complete parallel, sometimes they're tilted a little bit. So, you know, six to 12 inches is typically sufficient.
You mean that the intent of this description is to minimize the intrusiveness of that antenna?
Right, right. And I think flush mounting definitely works in that direction. We require that on towers.
Okay, so it's not something that staff is opposed to?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're good with that one.
So, did you settle on six inches or 12 inches? Plus, remember that this is plus than the width of the antenna itself. So I would recommend six, but.
I've never seen a mounting bracket, so I can't really comment if that's the right distance.
I'm fine with personally that, Ken's description there, yeah.
Right, and that's our standard for, as I said, for monopoles, so, okay. Okay, so the next two sets of changes had to do with criteria for the minor adjustment requirements and the major adjustment requirements. And I think those are the last changes that AT&amp;T had brought up. The major adjustment changes, they're recommending that the significant gap in coverage be eliminated. I think, as we've discussed several times, the major adjustment to requirements was based on the case law, and the city attorney has reviewed it. This is the last resort when they're wanting to do something that really is not supported by the code. So I would suggest for sure no changes to major adjustment to requirements, those criteria.
Are we on page 16? Bottom of page 16?
Seventeen.
Seventeen and 18, I think.
Mm-hmm, seventeen and 18.
Sixteen has red line.
Right, that's the minor adjustment, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Oh, we're coming back to it.
Yeah, she kind of skipped ahead. She skipped ahead of us.
Right, I'm just saying that major adjustment.
Way ahead of us.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Again, is that last resort, and this was the area where he had said it was based in case law, and we would recommend no further changes.
Right.
Candor, do you want to?
Oh, I, just to clarify, we did not suggest changing the word significant or taking it out. I think that what we added was, actually, I think that's something that Commissioner Mulcair mentioned about being able to add coverage, in addition to coverage, and we've talked about this before, we just wanted to state it for the record in this red line. But it would read a significant gap in coverage, capacity, frequency, or technology, again, to support really the ability to be able to provide service, not just today, but also to make sure we're able to provide services in the future. Thank you. That was big 17.
So 17, that was just the introductory language that you wanted to eliminate?
Where are you? Seventeen, right here.
Can you ground us in where we're at?
Yeah, we're on major. Page?
Yes, it's 1860 dot 200.
I have 17 and 18.
Yeah, top of 18, I believe, is what we're talking about, right?
Printed version, I believe, so, yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we're suggesting to take out the word significant, we were just.
Well, it's on the previous page, it's on page 17, but maybe that was just a typo.
I think they just moved it.
So just to clarify, on page 17, they have a strike through, the red strike through, that isn't in, I don't know why that's there. It was added, it's, the page 17 provided by staff doesn't have that language, so you can just ignore that strike through.
Okay.
And then if you go to page 18, which I believe is the issue at hand, and this is the language, so again, when we talk about the major adjustment, this is the, the safety net, if you will, test. This is how a provider comes in and says, "Okay, I know it violates your code, but courts say you must allow it if there's a significant gap in existing service," that is case law, "and if you show least intrusive means." So the proposed, just so you understand the proposal, the proposed additional language significantly expands that test. So it's not just existing server, it's capacity, it's frequency, technology, you know, that's, that is very large, that is a very broad test. And from the city attorney's perspective, that does away with the first element, significant gap. You can probably show a significant gap in any of those, and then you'd only be relying on the least intrusive means.
Right.
So you're saying this, as you were, a significant gap in the coverage meets, in your view, the legal?
Correct.
Requirements for the city on this?
Correct, and let me give you the, the background, perspective of when this will be looked at. So a provider comes in, says, "I want an 80-foot pole," I'm sorry, "in a forbidden zone." They must show these two things. So they'll say, "Well, you're preempted, preempted under federal law, and because we have a service gap." Well, courts say you're not preempted, you can forbid such a facility unless they show a significant existing service gap in their coverage, nobody else's, and at least intrusive means. That's when we're not preempted. So that, I used existing case law to fashion that test.
Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think we've talked about service gap a lot, right? In trying to define it. And I think what AT&amp;T has done in putting back in some of the terms that we've debated over the weeks and months, is to, to maybe reestablish some of our earlier points that coverage or service, those are the two terms, we were kind of going back and forth on, right? Service and coverage are difficult, at least for people of our background, to completely nail down. And I think these are meant to be clarifying terms of what we could mean in that gap, right? But I think where we landed in this conversation is, service was a broad enough descriptor that capacity affects service, frequency affects service, the underlying technology all affects service. So I think you're still going to have somewhat of a subjective test here when they make, when a carrier makes the claim that there is a significant gap in service. That will have to be explained either as a limitation of coverage, right? Maybe the, the, the physical space that an antenna can cover, or the frequency at which it transmits, or the capacity of users it can sustain. I thought what we tried to do there was pick a word like service that was broad enough to maybe catch all of those things that affect what we know of as service.
But that could be future looking, though. Or could it?
Well, I think our attorneys just explained this is very much a concurrent, a current test, not a future.
We want it to be defensible. I mean, I think, I think what our attorney is saying, yeah.
Right, it's existing.
Yeah.
So the additions here would be future looking, presumably.
Potentially, it's very hard.
Potentially, I mean.
And also to clarify, when you're saying, "How do they prove it?" So for a major adjustment, it's a type three decision, which requires a hearing. They would have to provide, in fact, you know, this is what a significant service gap is, they'd provide engineering or testimony. The city would be able to review it, refute it or not, but they have a, and then it'd have to be supported by substantial evidence. So they do have to go forward and show that industry standards of what a significant service gap is.
What's our, what's our preference, ladies and gentlemen?
Is there a motion?
I've not heard one, but the floor's open? Or if you just want to express a preference, I mean, we don't necessarily have to make a motion unless we're going to change it.
Well, right, we're either not going to change it, or we're going to make a motion to change it.
Those are our options.
Okay, unless I hear something, I think you're not wanting to change it.
Does anybody care to make a motion?
So could I just clarify that if we do not make any changes by adding the red letter items and the striked, the word service?
The red line are requested changes by AT&amp;T, so by doing nothing, imagine the red is gone.
Okay.
So you'd go back to the original staff recommendation.
All right, so before we depart from this, I want to bring up Linda Atkins' last comment, which had to do with subsection B 1A.
Which page, Lori?
So this is at the, B 1 is on 17, and then A, it's that same section, but that she had asked that the staff language be retained, but that the term reliable, unable to reliably connect to the service network, or regularly unable to maintain a reliable connection. I don't know if you have any.
I don't.
That's also something reliable that they would just have to show proof of.
So could we ask you to read what staff is recommending?
That's red line in our version.
Okay, so if you turn to page 17 and 19 in your attachment 1A, don't look at the AT&amp;T letter, go to 1A in your packet.
Can you give us a page number?
17 and 19.
On the, on the version.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's down toward the bottom, it's the third paragraph up. This is the language that you just decided to accept. And so the change requested by the T-Mobile attorney is that a significant gap in the service coverage of the applicant's service network exists such that users are regularly unable to add the word reliably, connect to the service network, or are regularly unable to maintain a reliable connection, or are unable to achieve reliable wireless coverage within a building.
Regularly unable equals unreliable. By definition, they're synonymous, so I don't, that makes no sense.
Okay, so the city attorney agrees with you, Deborah?
Does reliable have a legal?
Redundant, I agree, it's redundant.
One or the other.
Okay, one or the other, yeah.
Well, yeah, either we choose unreliable, or we choose regularly unable. Doesn't matter, I don't care, but I mean the same thing. I mean, unless there's a legal precedent on using either one, I don't know.
Not that I've read. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll not make that change. Okay, so the.
Can I make just a quick editorial comment? Would the word exists be better after the significant gap? Because it sort of gets lost in the language otherwise. Let you read it and decide.
A significant gap exists in the service coverage of the applicant's service network such that.
Correct, exists, you just want to move the verb closer? I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. All right, so the only thing left for this long evening is to look at the minor adjustments to requirements section, the changes that are on page 16 and 17 of the redlined AT&amp;T letter. And so the first set of changes is that the setback and landscaping requirements were put under the minor adjustment section as things that you could modify. And they are correct that these standards are already subject to some waiver, but they are not subject to all waivers, so that the setback requirements and So that the setback requirements and the landscaping chapters talk about how you can change things if you're going to provide better screening, et cetera, but they don't talk about all the possible permutations of a waiver to landscaping or setbacks. So that's why we included it here, to broaden the ability to modify. So I would suggest leaving them in just because it provides more opportunities for adjustment. Everybody okay with that? All right, and then on the next page. Hold on, I think you missed this one.
We've got the 10-foot change, too.
They have a 10, yeah. Because they didn't strike the five. It looks like it's not a change.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that changed instead of five feet up to 10 feet in additional facility height through a minor adjustment.
So just again to clarify, the five isn't represented, so original text proposed by staff, as discussed from the last meeting, would have been five, but they put in the 10, so the 10 is the proposed change.
With the exception of the view zones, that's right, everyone reads that correctly? Okay.
Correct.
So what?
This was consistent with, oh, no, this was different than the table thing. You're talking about...
No, I'm referring to the table, no.
This was the table, so that anytime you wanted to request a certain minor adjustment to the height, you could go through the minor adjustment process. And last week we talked, or last meeting, we talked about three to five feet. We settled on five feet. Now they're recommending 10 feet.
And probably because that gave them a little bit of extra room, and given the fact that we didn't raise the height limit, we kept it at the lower level. That's probably why they put that in.
If we had said 10, they would have asked for 15, so, I mean, it's...
So we just have to decide if we want it to be five or 10.
Do you have a position?
Well, we recommended five. At 10, you would go to a major adjustment, but that's conservative, I know.
Well, is somebody wanting to make a motion to accept this revision? Otherwise, we go on.
Yeah, that's basically our choice.
I'll make the motion.
To move to 10?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We've been over this ad nauseam.
All right, all those in favor, say, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, on page 17. Oh, this, we already reviewed this language. This was the change about the utility pole. Right, as near as practicable. And then two of the criteria in the next section, they are recommending one be struck and that the other one be modified. So these are for the criteria for a minor adjustment, and you have to meet all of the criteria. So they are suggesting that the unique characteristics of the site, the minimum necessary be considered, but that there not be any demonstration of minimization of impacts. And that the fourth criteria that initially staff had said approval of the adjustment will result in a better outcome for the community, they are suggesting that there will not be any substantial changes in the impacts on the neighborhood or the city as a result of the change.
Well, that one we already talked about, the number four. We already talked about that earlier tonight.
Four at the top, this is...
No, no, four, B4. The, there will not be...
Better outcome?
Yeah, the better outcome thing, we already talked about that earlier. So, I think you described what that meant, we had a whole discussion about that.
But I don't think we went through their proposal to...
Okay.
I don't.
The substantial discussion was with... We didn't, yeah, we didn't talk about the number three. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I know it's like, Ken, do you want to discuss your reasons for wanting to strike the third? You see what we're talking about on...
Yeah, you're talking about the applicant has demonstrated that any impacts associated with the adjustment have been minimized to maximum extent. I think that we were just suggesting for a minor modification, again, you're only talking about now five feet, disappointingly. That, you know, perhaps looking in, we suggested a test that was in Kirkland, which was there should, there will not be any substantial changes in the impacts on the neighborhood or as the city is a result of the change. So I think it's certainly a lot shorter, a lot more concise, and I think you still have to make an affirmative finding that you're not, you know, creating a significant impact on the surrounding neighborhood, or you're not really making a big change. And it would be hard to envision really five feet really making much of a, that much of a change anyway.
That isn't the only kind of minor adjustment, though, correct? I'm looking to Lori here.
Oh.
Height of five feet is not the only type of minor adjustment.
No, it could be landscaping or setbacks or the utility pole.
Right, so that's why three is relevant, because it's not just about height.
Well, it just spells things out, right? They're just trying to tighten it up. Does substantial change effectively cover all these things that we're, that we're looking at in three?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Okay, they're basically trying, these last two, they're basically trying to put in like one sentence and take out two, you know, basically most of these two paragraphs. Does substantial changes, you know, from a city legal standpoint encompass, I mean, simpler is, if it encompasses what we, I think...
So it doesn't. It's different, but there is a distinction. So one is more of a, it's not as negative as it could be, so there is not any substantial changes in the impacts. So that's, that's not very difficult to meet, especially with five feet if we're only on the height. So the other two is again more of a minimization. It's not talking about, well, if we raise it five feet, there's not much more of an impact. The other one is saying, well, have you shown that, you know, there's minimum impacts from that? More of an affirmative. And then the file, last one is, is it a better outcome?
Just to clarify, we had...
That's a little harder.
I'm sorry, we had suggested taking out the setback exception because we thought it was already covered elsewhere in the code, and so you guys had reinserted that. So that's important in the context of why we had proposed this, is that we thought setback modifications was going to be handled under a different section of the codes as opposed to a minor adjustment. It's important to know that if you're going to increase the height of a facility, let's say five feet, are you showing that you're minimizing impacts as opposed to, and of course, that, in other words, does that criteria now, does that work well with height? You know, it might work well for setbacks, but does it work for height?
Well, again, it's not just about height. Height is one of the possibilities that you would ask for a minor adjustment.
Yeah, we would suggest, I'm sorry, we would suggest that maybe, maybe that particular criteria might be very appropriate for evaluating setback adjustments, may not be quite as relevant to evaluating height increases. Again, we thought we were taking that out, which is why we had suggested that it get stricken, but if it remained in, then we would probably suggest, and look to staff here if they agreed, that perhaps it would be more appropriately applied to just setback modifications.
Yeah, staff actually does not agree, because there are a variety of criteria here that you look at to determine whether it's minimized impact, including the existing vegetation, topography, natural features, use of concealment elements, et cetera. They're all relevant to a height increase, I think.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
So in or out for number three?
Any, speak now, or? You have a, came with the staff version or the AT&amp;T?
I think the staff made it clear that it's in there so that it's specific to the minor adjustment. I think it needs to stay in.
Yeah, unless somebody makes a motion.
Mike Dennis, or you guys, you guys want to make a motion, or?
I'm okay.
Okay, we're good.
All right, and then number four, this is where the change is, it sounds like it was from a Kirkland code, there will not be any substantial changes in the impacts on the neighborhood or the city as a result of the change versus approval of the adjustment will result in a better outcome for the community than would strict adherence to the existing standards.
And could a better, I mean, is a better outcome service?
Well, it could be, it could be service. It would be determined through the process. I mean, it would be determined through the community process.
It's not precluding that as one of the better outcomes. Okay. Cool.
Okay, any motions on that one? From the... No motions, okay.
Okay. Okay, wow, good job. So I think that we've gone through this, and if you're comfortable, which I think you are at this point, what we would recommend doing is going ahead to schedule the public hearing on June 7th, and we'll advertise the hearing and let folks know about it, and then at, after the hearing, your last chance to tweak and manipulate before it would go to the city council. And we're hoping if we hold a June 7 hearing, that maybe that could happen in, was it early? Early July? We're trying to catch it before the August break. So at your first joint meeting, it would be kind of an introductory session, and then council could direct if they wanted any tweaks.
And that's June 7?
June 7th is, would be your public hearing, so it would only be in front of you. And it would give everyone another opportunity to comment, maybe hear from some folks we haven't heard from.
Does that mean for next week? Because we had time to...
So next week, we had left some room to continue this discussion if we needed to, but you did it. So next week will be an introduction to the housing strategy plan, which is your next... You are meeting next week. That's your regularly scheduled meeting, and I know you are not meeting on June 21st. The city council has reserved the room for their retreat, so our room is not available. So, anyway, we'll see how the hearing goes on the 7th and determine whether we can move straight to council or another meeting needs to be scheduled.
So in preparation for our next meeting, since we'll start looking at the housing strategy plan, or whatever you want to call it, what were the meetings that you wanted us to review where council had talked about this?
Right, so I'll be sending out the packet tomorrow with the agenda, and in the memo, it gives you the link so that you can view the council discussion that they held over the housing strategy plan.
I did listen to one of their meetings.
Yeah, they just discussed it at one. It was just the one.
Okay, it was very informative, and there were some specific things that they came to conclusion about.
Right, right. So that information will be coming out to you tomorrow.
Okay.